Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, February 10th Lincoln City Council meeting. And I'd like for everyone to please rise and say the Pledge of Legions followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I see our first order of business is the Mayor's Award of Excellence. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, members of the council. The Mayor's Award of Excellence for January is presented to two employees who are responsible for the implementation and growth of the purchasing card program, we refer to as the P Card program, in their respective departments. Cindy Roth is the Business Manager in our Lincoln Transportation and Utilities Department, and Jeff Chambers is the Information and Fiscal Management Program Manager in our Health Department. And they were nominated by Chris Lawler of the Finance Department's Purchasing Division in the category of productivity. So, the P Card program, if you're not familiar with it, is part of a larger city and county-wide effort at modernization and productivity. P Cards allow movement away from more time-consuming paper processes and enable certain trained employees to make authorized purchases and payments using a city-charge card. And adoption of the P Card program is helping to reduce some of our administrative costs of transactions and provides other benefits, including rebates for our city. So paving the way for a smooth rollout of a program like this are the two individuals we are celebrating today. Cindy and Jeff's efforts to provide us with a great example of how to implement big changes like this with a positive attitude and strong leadership, dedication, and hard work are why we're here. They both started their processes with a year of research. Working individually with department and division leaders, they created an implementation schedule to ensure a successful rollout and to minimize some of the operational and accounting complications that might have otherwise arisen. Cindy worked with employees to identify methods that not only maximize the benefits and efficiencies of the P Card program, but also that improve general accounting practices for LTU. And within one month of implementation, LTU saw an increase of over 200% in P Card usage, and that equates to more than $5,000 in additional monthly rebates. Jeff successfully worked with our Health Department Accounting Team to create an effective and efficient process to use the new payment method. And as the program has grown, we're really grateful to Jeff because he's continued to search for new opportunities for P Card use and to remove barriers to their use. And so when he accomplishes this, he shares that information with the P Card administrator that helps us improve our efforts citywide. In nominating Jeff and Cindy, Lawler wrote that they are "the perfect example of what it takes to implement change, promote growth, and inspire prosperity for the city of Lincoln." So it's my pleasure to present Jeff and Cindy with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for January. I hope you will join me in congratulating me for their -- help me in congratulating them for their hard work and their commitment to our city. So, if you want to come up, we'll be happy to talk. And Chris Lawler would like to say a few words. If you guys could stay standing while he comes up, I'm going to move over this way. And after that, we'll invite you guys to speak.
Hello. Hi, my name's Chris. As you mentioned, I work in the purchasing office. So there are leaders. In my opinion, there are exceptional leaders. And one key characteristic of being an exceptional leader is seeking out responsibility, not just waiting for it to be given to you. Jeff and Cindy are undeniably exceptional, and the results of their efforts have paid dividends for not only their departments, but the city as a whole. Implementing a new payment type and an associated accounting process to accommodate that is no easy task. Before this program began, Jeff and Cindy both took action to get involved on the ground level, gained an understanding of how this program was going to work, and began preparing their departments accordingly. They kept an open dialogue, not only asking questions, but also providing ideas and solutions that not only helped our departments through the implementation process, but in turn provided me with information and answers for other departments who are facing those same challenges. Although this program is only a blip on the radar of their everyday responsibilities, Jeff and Cindy understood the benefits of the program, fast-tracked their internal processes to maintain compliance with the policy. The success we've seen in their respective departments is a culmination of months of hard work, dedication, commitment, and teamwork. Their positive attitude and focus on solutions is a big part of why they've excelled. I can stand up here and honestly go on and on about how great it's been for me, working with them, and what they've done for the city and their departments, but for the sake of everyone's time, I'll go ahead and step aside and let Tom talk a little more.
Yeah, Tom Cassidy is now going to come up and say a few words, followed by Pat Lopez.
Chris, I want to thank you for nominating these two employees. And Mayor, thank you for acknowledging the great work that they've done. I've had the honor to work around both Jeff and Cindy. And apart from everything you've heard so far, I also want to know that these are two city employees that contribute immensely to very positive organizational cultures at the Health Department and at LTU. I officed out of the Health Department for seven years, and I ran into Jeff pretty much on a daily basis. I see the work that Cindy has done in creating an accounting and business management team at LTU. They're just very, very positive veteran city employees that contribute immensely to a very healthy workplace culture. And thank you.
Our Health Director, Pat Lopez.
Good afternoon. Jeff has many titles at the Health Department, but one of his informal ones is P Card Expert. Everything we do, he reminds us about using the P Card and how we can maximize that. But I think the thing that hasn't been said about Jeff is that what he did with the P Card and the excellence he brought to that is what he brings every day and the work he does at the department. We're very grateful to him, and I think he's a genuine asset to the city in trying to use our resources efficiently, effectively, and always in the most positive way possible. He's got a great sense of humor, and he brings that to what he's trying to give us. And that's a little hard sometimes when you're talking about the budget. So, we appreciate Jeff a great deal, and are very pleased that he was the recipient of this award.
Jeff and Cindy, would you like to come forward and say a few words and introduce any special folks who might be with you?
So, accountants love documentation. So I wrote myself a note, this document, to remind myself what I wanted to say. So here goes. "I'm humbled by this honor and share this recognition with the terrific team I am privileged to work with at LTU and across the city. Thanks to Chris for nominating me, and a huge thank you to my family who is here. John, my husband, Erin, my daughter, Hattie, my granddaughter. They make it easy for me to come to work every day because they support me in everything I do. So thank you very much."
Introduce my wife, Maureen. And Pat asked me to maybe mention a few things, so I've got a list here.
Okay. You have more than 45 seconds. This is not the Academy Awards. Take your time.
It's quick. The P Card program has increased our efficiency and flexibility and also empowered our employees to do the jobs they need to do. There's a lot of people that have been involved in making this successful program, starting with Brandon, Chris, Bob. But Chris really deserves a lot of credit for this. He spent numerous, numerous hours working with finance, the Treasurer's Office, and the bank to get this set up. He's went through dozens and dozens of training sessions, been on the call, on the phone for numerous, numerous questions and follow-up. But I think what I credit Chris most with was he pulled Cindy and I and a couple other folks together early on just to kind of talk about the program and kind of get our buy-in and get our creative juices going. And we actually suggested a couple of changes, and he rolled that out. We implemented the changes before the rollout, and I think it made a better product. Let's see. And I'm really here because of my team back at the Health Department, made up of Connie Erickson, Jim Ring, and Shelley Burr. They're the ones that really made this roll. After I met with Chris, Cindy and I met with Chris, we got together as a group and kind of talked about the rollout. We rolled out in phases. We rolled out just the four of us first, so we understood how to process everything and created the training and got it going. So, anyway, for that, I'm really, really grateful for my team of three. And I'd like to mention that monthly, Chris puts together the spend analysis of what invoices could have been used with the P Card versus a check. I got it last week, and there's two. So I called up Chris, I said, "Chris, I'm looking for a zero. I want to be a zero. So maybe next month, I'll be a zero, Chris. So we're looking for that." So we let two slip through, but anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate the team effort led by these amazing individuals to help us really run an operationally excellent and innovative city. So thank you.
Well, certainly, thank you all very much. I know that when we implement new programs that bring about a change, some people are pretty resistant to that. And I think it's that positive attitude and that can-do attitude that makes us all very proud of the work that people who work for the city of Lincoln do. We are very progressive. We get things done. We show the other counties how to get things done. And so, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your positivity. We are all very proud. Any other comments? Another round of applause. Okay. Thank you all very much. We will continue our meeting in accordance with L.B. 898. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all the public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. And we do have public comment this evening. So Teresa, will you go ahead and please read the first item?
Yes. We ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet lying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, we can move on.
All right. There's nothing to vote on. So next, we'll go on to our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward and raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Item 4A is the manager application of James Fish for Fraternal Order of Eagles, area 147, at 500 West Industrial Lake Drive.
Hi.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Just state your name and address, Jim.
What's that?
Just state your name and address.
James Fish, 3901 Castle Circle, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68524.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Tell us a little bit about your application, and I'm not familiar with the Fraternal Order of Eagles.
It's only open like two days a week, Tuesdays and Fridays. It's people trying to raise money to help people to help people. We've recently come across some bad times, and I rearranged a few things as far as manager and stuff, and I took over, and now I need to get my name on the license, I guess.
Okay. And how long has this organization been around? How long has this organization been around?
It's been around for a long time. As far as I know, I've just come into it like last June and become a member and volunteer a lot of time there. It just seems like a good organization. They do dances, and we have a little kitchen, and it's a nice little place.
Terrific. Are there any other questions for Mr. Fish? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay, thank you. We can move on.
All right. Next are items 4B and C. They're the application of Kincaid Brewing, doing business as Boombox Social Sideshow Still Company for a Class C K liquor license at 1630 P Street, and the related manager application of Cody Schmick.
I guess.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Cody Schmick, C-O-D-Y-S-C-H-M-I-C-K. I live at 3460 Anaheim Drive here in Lincoln. So we, I own Kincaid Brewing Company, LLC. We have a brewery in Broken Bow, Nebraska, a restaurant in Grand Island, and then a little taproom down here in the Hay Market. We've loved being here the last year and a half. We recently acquired property on 1630 P Street, and we are going to have two concepts in there. It was Green Flash Brewing before.
Thank you.
We bought all the equipment from them, and we are going to put two concepts in here, the first of which, and the one I'm here to talk to you about today, is Boombox Social. It's going to be a classic downtown bar, offering competitive games, pizza, and other late-night eats, cold beer, mixed drinks, loud tunes, and great social interaction in this same building. In the next month or two, I'll be coming before you guys, because we are going to be, in the back half, we're going to be putting Lincoln's first distillery. So we're going to be making rum, whiskey, gin, and vodka there as well. So the building is about 10,000 square feet, so we needed a few different things to fill up the space and make it successful. We're taking it very seriously, because the last couple of guys that have been in that building have not been successful. So we're excited about the concept and sharing it with the folks in Lincoln. But I'll take any questions you guys have.
Any questions for Mr. Schmick?
No, I don't have any questions. Don't have any questions, but I wish you good luck, and I'd be very interested to see the second half of the building proposal.
Excellent.
Wonderful. Well, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay, thank you. And seeing none, we will move on.
All right. Next are items 4D and E. They are the application of Emmanuel Retirement Communities, doing business as The Landing at Williamsburg Village, for a Class I liquor license at 3500 Faulkner Drive, and the related manager application of Daniel Spicer. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. David Levy, D-A-V-I-D-L-E-V-Y, Barrett Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street, here with Daniel Spicer, on behalf of Emmanuel Retirement Communities regarding their liquor license application for The Landing at Williamsburg Village. This one probably is quite a bit tamer than the last one you heard, maybe not as much fun, but important nonetheless. Emmanuel is simply asking for a liquor license to provide cocktails, beer, and wine to their residents and guests at this facility in accordance with the dinner hour, which runs from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. They'll have trained servers. Mr. Spicer is seeking the manager license as well, and he and two other people who work at the facility, the front-of-house manager and back-of-house manager, will be taking the training class later this week, and the people who will be serving the residents there are trained to do that as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. If they're tough questions, I'll defer them to Mr. Spicer.
Any questions for Mr. Spicer?
I have one. How do the servers know if some of the guests at The Landing can actually have alcohol, probably depending upon their medications?
My name is Daniel Spicer. I reside at 15340 Chalko Point Drive in Omaha, Nebraska. The folks at The Landing who would be able to partake of that are not residents who we have any control over whether they can or cannot have that type of stuff. Those residents don't reside in The Landing.
Oh, I see.
You know, this is an independent living community.
Oh, this is the independent side.
They do have independent and assisted, but both of those are, they're not like any long-term care or memory support or any of those type of.
And they don't share the same dining hall?
No.
No, they don't. Okay, that answered my question. So thank you. Are there any other questions? Well, thank you very much. Is there? Yeah, I'm sorry, did you?
No, I just, thank you.
Okay, you are welcome. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, we can move on.
All right. Next are items 4F and G. Application of 4646 WH Investment Group, Inc., doing business as Marketplace IGA, for a Class DK liquor license at 4646 West Huntington Avenue, and the related manager application. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
My name is Tuane Mai, T-U-A-N, last name Mai, M-A-I. I live in 2550 Southview Circle, Lincoln, Nebraska. I am the owner and manager of the IGA marketplace. I would like to have a liquor license to sell the beer and wine.
Terrific. Are there any questions for Mr. Mai?
I do have one question. In the cover letter, it said that you were applying for a D license and a K license?
Yes.
But on the application, you checked C.
Yes, after that, and they corrected.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Mai? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay, we can go on.
All right. We'll go on to items 4H and I. They're the application of Family Dollar for a Class B liquor license at 2541 North 11th Street, Suite 10, and the related manager application of Louis Masters III.
Okay. And then, Teresa, hold on one second.
I'd like to recuse myself on chance of a potential conflict of interest for these items.
Okay. Okay, and we will call you back.
Now, you can raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Holly Rohr, H-O-L-L-Y-R-O-H-R, 2841 Tierra Drive, apartment 203, Lincoln. I'm here representing, my district manager is at an inventory, so I am the store manager at this Family Dollar. All of the newly remodeled, new-concept stores are applying for liquor licenses that the company is doing to sell alcoholic beverages. It's a new concept that Dollar Tree and Family Dollar, that's where the same company is going forward with. And my supervisor, she is taking the class. Someone asked me about that earlier. I had to call and ask her.
Chair, look to your right.
Okay, yes, Roy, I'm sorry.
Your neighbors to the west, I believe it's a daycare center, have they expressed to you any dissatisfaction with your application?
They have not. They come and shop in the store regularly, almost daily.
Okay, and I guess, I know that, I'm sure that this isn't compliance. I believe that there is a certain restriction, the number of feet from the daycare center? No?
If the restriction applied in this case, it would be in violation. They're just feet apart, their doors.
Correct. It's based on zoning.
It's based on zoning.
Right. So I don't believe there's a zone violation here.
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there, Benny, did you have a question?
Just briefly, so, Ms. Royer?
Rohr.
Rohr, just Rohr. So you are going to be the manager?
I am the store manager, yes.
On the application, or you're speaking for?
I'm speaking for them, but I am the store manager at the retail location.
Your name will be on the application.
Correct.
Okay. That's where I was a little confused. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is, yes.
I suggest we deal with this matter separately now, so Richard can rejoin us.
Okay. Thank you very much. You may sit down. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item?
Would you like my name again?
Yeah, just for.
Yeah.
For the record.
Cody Schmick, C-O-D-Y-S-C-H-M-I-C-K. I actually own the grocery store right next door to Family Dollar, and we do have an exclusivity agreement on that parking lot with our landlord that does not allow them to carry liquor. I know that's not you guys' maybe jurisdiction or whatever, but just throw that out there, so.
Okay, thank you very much. I do have a question for legal.
Yeah.
And I have a question that, now that you've raised that, so, this is an application for a liquor license for all the stories, not just the one?
No, this is just for the one.
This is just for the one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the earlier testimony that they would be applying for all the locations?
Later, that's later.
Later. Okay, one location only.
So Jeff, I guess I was confused. I thought because, you know, with the daycare, with the church, and other things, you had to be, exceed, I don't know, is it 100, 150 feet? I don't remember.
Yes. And so, your question is, Jeffrey Patrick, say your turn.
Yeah, if you could clarify that for me, because I understood that if you're in close proximity to a park, a daycare center, a church, that there was a certain, a school, there is a certain number of feet that you had to be a distance from. And so, could you?
Well, I can't speak specifically to this particular location and what zoning conflicts it may or may not have.
Okay.
I just have not, the question hasn't come up to the law department.
Okay. Well, then, the question, if, you know, as a retailer, I'm very sensitive when there are use restrictions per someone else's lease. How does the liquor commission handle that?
I think the, and I can't speak for the liquor commission, I would tell you that I think that the city doesn't really have a role to play if you're talking about a non-compete contract. I mean, I think Mr. Schmick and his business would have recourse in the courts if they have a contract that's going to be violated by this business entering and violating an existing contract. But that's really separate from the council's duty to make a recommendation of the liquor commission. I appreciate the fact that you raised that, but I don't know that that's relevant to your decision today.
I have, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I have one more question, madam, for our city attorney. The applicant for the manager is Mr. Louis Masters, and he is not present.
He's not present, and I think she misspoke when she was trying to clarify that Ms. Rohr is the manager, but she will not be the liquor manager. That will, which is not unusual. We oftentimes see someone who's a liquor manager, for example, for four different convenience stores and so on. I think that's how they're contemplating this taking place. If your question is, can you approve the liquor license for someone who's not present? I think that's a policy for the council to consider, but factually, the person has submitted their application, there's been a background check on Mr. Masters, and so I don't think it would be improper for you to support the liquor manager license for. license for this particular person.
Okay.
Despite the fact that they're not present. I think the council, given the past experience I've had in front of the council, would have more concerns if there was some sort of a criminal record or some sort of behavior where you wanted to look that applicant in the eye and ask him some questions. But I don't think that's present in this case.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I just have a question for Mr. So have you notified your landlord of your concern?
Yes, we're going through that right now.
Okay.
So, they are already in breach of another part of it, which is grocery, and they've expanded on that, and so we are gonna fight it. So, but I don't think it's between us and necessarily Family Dollar, it's between us and our landlord. They signed contradicting agreements, so.
Okay, thank you. And Roy?
Well, let me just make a comment here on this whole thing. If I were to have to vote today on this, I think that is, while it's probably technically okay with the zoning and having a liquor license, I think it certainly violates the spirit and the intent of our, our city ordinances to keep these kind of alcohol sales far enough away from something like right next door, an infant daycare. So, I am going to move that we delay this for two weeks, because we are not meeting next week, and then take it up again, and after having consulted with the city law department to see what their opinion is on this. So, I move this be delayed for two weeks.
Is there a second?
Do you want just action or public hearing as well?
I think we should hear a public hearing.
Okay.
I can, I can second.
Okay, and any discussion?
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, I think that's a good idea, and I will support that motion to delay, because I think there's some things that are not quite clear on this application. Okay, Teresa, we can call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
McGinnis? Oh, he's gone. Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
And Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Five.
Yeah, five to zero.
Tammy is sick.
Thank you. My skills were seven minus one, it's not five.
Richard's coming back in, okay?
Okay. All right, we'll move on to items four J and K. Application of Rumology for a Class I liquor license at 7301 South 27th Street, Suite 150, and the related manager application of James Donaldson. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
James Donaldson. My address is 8230 Rockledge Road, Apartment 122, here in Lincoln.
Welcome, Mr. Donaldson.
Thank you.
Could you tell us a little bit about your application, and tell us a little bit more about Rumology?
I used to own a small restaurant and bar in the Haymarket, or one of, one of many partners in it. It was called Flatwater Bistro, and we sold that to, almost three, three years ago. And ever since that time, I've longed to have some operation again on my own. My goal here is not food at this time, that could come down the road, but I found this location on South 27th, and it seems like it will fit my needs perfectly. I can be a single owner-operator, I can work in my own, my own establishment, my daughters can work with me. I'm excited about the opportunity. I like rum, and in my, my visits at bars in Lincoln, rum just kind of is underserved. I think there's a lot of opportunities if you drink whiskey, or mules, or tequila, but, so, I'm a fan of rums from Barbados and the Caribbean, and I'd like to bring some of that to Lincoln.
That sounds wonderful. So will you be serving other things in addition to featuring rum?
Yeah, yes, I'll have ten taps, and I will focus on local craft beers. Any domestics or big names would be in the cooler in a bottle. I wanna, I'm a firm believer in local and keeping things close, and so, I appreciate the relationships I built at the Flatwater with the different breweries here in Lincoln, and I hope to expand on that. And, yeah, we'll have, we'll have your basic adult beverages of all makes and kinds, but our focus will be rums.
That's terrific. Now, tell me exactly where it's at on South 27th, what are the cross streets?
Well, it's pretty well hidden, so it could be a speakeasy.
Okay.
It's, it's where the Anytime Fitness Building is on 27th, next to Village Inn, South 27th, just south of Pine Lake. It's at the back end of that building.
Okay. Good to know. Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Seeing none.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move approval of items four A through G and J and K.
Second?
F and G?
I shall second.
Benny, second that, okay. Any further discussion?
Quick question.
Yes.
Point of clarification, you said four A through G?
I believe that's correct.
Or, okay, so you're skipping H and I.
And we are delaying.
Hi, we already dealt with it, so you could come join us.
Yep, we continued those for two weeks, Richard.
Okay, let's vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is assessing the costs incurred by the city for building demolition on property located at 3401 North 51st Street, 1225 North 29th Street, and 2021 Garfield Street, the garage only. Assessing the costs incurred by the city for property cleanup on property located at 340 Northwest 19th Street and 2304 South 24th Street, and assessing the fees and penalties for neglected buildings on property located at 5703 Huntington Avenue, 5320 Leighton Avenue, 1850 Harwood Avenue, or Harwood Street, 1020 North 35th Street, 3340 C Street, 2271 Holdred Street, 4039 F Street, 2958 North 54th Street, 3640 South 56th Street, 5120 L Street, and 1609 South 27th Street. And as I mentioned in the two o'clock meeting, we do have a motion to amend to remove 1020 North 35th Street from the list, because they have paid. Welcome.
I'm Sean Stewart, I'm Chief Housing Inspector with Building and Safety.
Welcome, Mr. Stewart. Could you tell us a little bit about these properties, and how they got to this state, and what is the process that they went through, and?
For the demolitions, those went through the dangerous building process. The properties either fell into a condition where, where they were considered dangerous to the general public, and so at that point, notice is given to the owners to try to remedy the situation. If they don't fulfill those, those repairs, then at that point, the city would step in and demolish, demolish it through a contractor, through a bid process.
So how much notification is the owner given to clean it up?
Generally, they go through the complaint process. It's usually, I mean, each of these properties has had probably at least six to eight months worth of complaints, where we've tried to contact or, or work with the owner to get some type of resolution to either demolish or repair the properties. Once it's declared a dangerous building, then it's put on a six, a 30 to 60 day time period, 30 days to start work, 60 days to complete the work. If, if the process, if they have started the process of making the repairs, then, you know, we can give them more time at that point. However, these, these owners failed to do so.
And so if they do not pay this penalty, how is that handled?
Well, I'm sorry, I was just initially speaking of the, of the demolition, the dangerous building and the demolition. The other one is for the Neglected Building Registry, and those are properties that are vacant, that have either went through the complaint process, where they're vacant and disrepair, have been repeatedly unsecured, have been placarded for more than two years. And not all of these have been placarded for more than two years either. These are just the general requirements to get on the Neglected Building Registry. Have not had a response from the owner, have been repeatedly in violation of the code. So, if we can't get any action and the property's vacant, then we can put it on the Neglected Building Registry at that time, that is registered every three months, 90 days. So, at that time, we, if the owner fails to pay the fee, then the city registers it for him, pays the fee, and then we can assess a $500 penalty as well.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Stewart?
Comments, questions?
Sure.
Push the button first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Stewart, thank you very much. So, the top half of this are things we're taking down, the bottom half are things we're assessing more fees.
Correct. Now, and then there's also the assessment of, of fees for cleanups on properties, and those are properties that have.
Some type of hazard.
Have had a civil injunction. My terminology is not correct. Injunction. We've, we've had a couple prosecutions on the owner, and so we went to a judge and got an injunction to have the city hire a contractor and clean up the property. And so, these are often owner-occupied properties where the owner has failed to clean up items in their yard, or, so.
What I really want to do is say thank you. I appreciate your work and the work of the City Attorney's Office and Building and Safety. We have a number of properties in our community that are posing a health risk, health risk and endanger our community, and you guys are working hard to make sure these are no longer issues and to make our community safe. I appreciate it greatly. I do hear from residents from our community all the time about issues, and I relay them to you, and you guys are starting to address them in a more positive manner, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, we can go on.
All right, we'll go on to item 5B, Appointing Elizabeth Elliott as Director of the Transportation and Utilities Department. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you. This is an exciting day.
Yes, it is.
Glad it has arrived. I want to welcome you all to our new LTU Director, Liz Elliott, who is, we previously know as an Assistant City Attorney here in Lincoln. She has a lot of experience and deep understanding of the LTU Department through her work at the law department, and brings a real wealth of knowledge about the complexities of that work, which is part of why we wanted her to serve in this new capacity. She has also really impressed me with her plan to utilize data. She's been very involved in our Open Data Initiative in the past, and knows how useful and powerful data is to drive good decision-making, and she's earned the respect of colleagues across the city, and I knew that before we made her the offer, but what's happened since has been this kind of round of applause from people who have been so pleased with her selection and her willingness to step up in this new leadership capacity, and really, really pleased that she was willing to do that. Before she says a few words, I just wanted to also express how grateful I am to Tom Cassidy for stepping in in an interim capacity as the LTU Director, following Mickey's departure to the private sector. We were so grateful for him to helping us in the meantime while we did our search, and, and he was, of course, also vital in helping us identify his successor. So, I want to welcome Liz to the team, let her talk to you all, and reassure you that you should continue to see really good work coming out of LTU.
Thank you. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here. I am, I look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve the city of Lincoln and to work with the great people at LTU. I will continue to build that partnership, both with the mayor and city council, as well as the community. So if there are ever any questions, or you need additional information, don't hesitate to contact me or anyone at LTU. We do want to continue that partnership and provide as much information as possible and keep those communication lines open. So, thank you all for this opportunity, and I look forward to it.
So are there any tough questions for Liz?
Just a big thank you.
Yeah.
A big thank you.
Thank you for taking on such a responsibility.
Thank you. You can save all the questions for those snowy days or the pop.
Oh, sure. I'm sure that's what Tom is gonna miss the most.
I'll have him on speed dial, just so he doesn't forget the fun.
And like, what were you thinking, Tom, when you took, agreed to do this? And Liz, do you know what you're gonna be doing?
Yeah, I know.
Right, especially in the middle of winter.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much for stepping up. We are grateful.
She is the true heart of a public servant, and I don't think you could have anyone in this role who didn't have that, so thank you.
Thank you.
You're here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, we can move on.
All right, we can vote on these items. Item 5A is assessing the costs incurred by the city for building demolition, property cleanup, and neglected buildings on various properties introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, introduced by Washington, seconded by Roy, and Roy?
I am going to move motion to amend number one, which removes 1020 North 35th Street from the list of addresses to be assessed, because they have resolved the issue.
Terrific. Is there a second?
I'll second that, because it's just funny. Oh, and funny that he seconded me, and I'm going to second him.
Okay, terrific. Any discussion on the amendment? Let's vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 5B is appointing Liz Elliott as Director of LTU.
Oh, do we need to vote on the main motion?
Oh, I'm so sorry, you are correct.
Okay, let's vote on the main motion.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Now we can vote on appointing Liz as Director of LTU, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Washington, seconded by Show. Any discussion?
This is a good thing?
This is a good thing.
This is a good thing. We're, we're excited to have Liz on board, and we are grateful to Mr. Cassidy for stepping up, who is a true public servant as well. And again, what were you thinking? It's winter here.
Notice how close he is to the door.
I know. We are grateful for your service, and hopefully you are looking forward to a nice vacation in a wonderful, warm climate, and you probably won't have a chance to even miss us, so. Thank you again to Liz, and any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then, our ordinance's third reading. Item 6A is amending Lincolnous Book Code, Chapter 8.20, to codify existing farmers' market market regulations and regulate cottage food operations, introduced by Ward.
So moved. Second.
Introduced by Ward and Christensen, and seconded by Shob. Any discussion? Yes. Richard, or Shob?
Benny, go ahead.
I'd like to get someone from staff to come up and talk about this for a second. I think I'm on the right one. I'm a little confused.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney.
Jeff, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused on which one of these two. I think I really wanted to talk on the fee portion at the bottom, and I got a little confused on that one. I'd like to withdraw my request for a comment at this time.
You know, if you talk fast, nobody'd notice. Different question, but that's fine.
So you should.
Well, Councilman Shob, I think I'd like to, please don't leave Jeff. After the public hearing, we had asked that the, there be a clarification on vendor, and I believe that after that hearing, staff went back, looked at the ordinance again, and have a position that to make a change right now in that ordinance would be confusing and time-consuming because of the multiple ways vendor has been used, and I would just like there to be a record showing that, so if we could get a small memo that just clarifies the reasoning why we're going to leave the ordinance where it is, that would be very helpful.
We'll get to work on a memo and get that out to you yet this week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we can go ahead. If there's no further discussion, we can vote on this item.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
And Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to two. Next then is 6B, Adopting Fees for the Cottage Food Operations Permit under Chapter 8.20 of the Lincoln Municipal Code, introduced by Ward.
So moved. Second.
Introduced by Ward and Christensen, seconded by Shob, and you have a question?
This is the one I have a question on.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kirkpatrick, thank you for coming forward. At last week's public hearing, there was a resident of our community that came forth and said that they had a cottage industry, and they also had a booth at the farmer's market. I understood the testimony to say that they were paying a fee for inspection for their cottage industry and a fee for inspection at their farmer's market. That sounds like a duplication of fees for the same service. Is there, can we address that?
Yes, so my understanding is you would pay, he would pay, Mr. Sanger, whoever got a cottage food permit would pay a fee to the city for, to operate that business, and that would include a home inspection regulation on the part of the city. If Mr. Sanger, some other holder of a cottage food permit went to a farmer's market, they would pay to the farmer's market whatever the farmer's market collected. We, the city collects a fee from the farmer's market in order to operate. They can pass along a portion of that fee to vendors, people, whether they have a cottage food permit, or whether they're there with fresh fruit or vegetables, or they can, they can absorb that all themselves, but one of the things that comes with a farmer's market permit is the city does come along periodically and regulate and inspect who's ever selling food at a farmer's market, if that makes sense.
It did. So I think, I understood it to say the city collects those two fees, and I thought that would be a duplication of service. You're saying the city does not collect the inspection fee twice from that cottage and then the farmer's market vendor?
That's true, but we do collect a fee from the farmer's market operator.
Okay.
One fee there and one fee from the cottage food operator.
And that's for, just the farmer's market is a different service than the cottage?
Exactly, yes.
That was my confusion. I appreciate you helping me understand that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Richard?
Yeah, the, the reason I voted no, and I'll vote no on this, also is I believe the, the extra regulations and rules and fees that we're putting on a small businesses or small industries or small families that are trying to start businesses is a little excessive because the state has already put regulations and such into place, and this will be only regulating people in the city of Lincoln or within the three-mile limit of the city of Lincoln, and it won't be regulating any others that will be attending the farmer's markets or be selling inside Lincoln. So it would be only regulating and putting fees on these small businesses, these entrepreneurs that want to start their businesses here in Lincoln, so that's why I'm against it.
Any other comments? I want to say that I am going to support this because I think the service that the Health Department provides in coaching these small businesses on how to improve and ensure our food safety in the city of Lincoln is really paramount, and I have found that our experience working with the Health Department, they're great coaches, they want to point out more efficient and effective ways of sanitation, and to ensure the, the food safety for everyone in, in our city, and I think these are valuable learning lessons and tools for, for anyone in, in our city if they're going to be selling food, and I think it's, it's a very reasonable fee that they're charging, it's, it's on an annual basis, and I don't think it, it should anyway be an impediment to any of, of these businesses as they start out. So I am going to support this. Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to two. Item 6C, A Street Name Change 19002, renaming a portion of Nebraska Highway 2 between Calvert and South 120th Street as Nebraska Parkway, introduced by Ward.
So moved. Second.
Introduced by Ward and Christensen, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. 6D is approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and Spores Landscaping for the sale of city-owned property generally located at 12th and Oak Streets, introduced by Ward.
So moved. Second.
Introduced by Ward and Christensen, seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. 6E, A Street Name Change 20001, renaming a portion of Tuscan Drive between South 38th and South 39th Streets as Tucson Drive, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Ward and Christensen, seconded by Washington. Any discussion?
Are we really sure about this?
I, I know that they're probably gonna
You've got a gun shot, haven't you?
Probably use spell check on this one.
Yeah, spell check and name changes, streets. I, I, yeah, we got the wrong one.
We're gonna go with it.
I got the wrong one.
All right, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.